Mrs. Fano? Did we lose her?
Here.
Oh, yes. Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Petrazino?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport? Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman? Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Dr. Modrak?
Here.
Okay, pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, and every day and justice for all. Open public records act, please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of the meeting, which included time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the District Website, and advertised in the Daily Record and the Montville Tap Into, the Board's official newspapers, on August 13th, 2025.
Okay, thank you. There are no student reports, so let's just jump in with superintendent's report.
All right, so we've had a very busy summer. The buildings are almost completed and ready to go. We have construction going on in a couple of them. William Mason Woodmont will be done by mid-October, and the high school, probably the same thing. Those are with the security vestibules that we're adding on to those schools. We have run into a slight issue with a contractor, and then we'll be talking about that later on with an addendum tonight at Hildale. So, um, so that project will be taking a little bit longer to complete. On the positive news, we had, we offered this year a summer enrichment program through Medlec for theater program. We had about 25-plus students participate. That was mostly middle school and high school students. They produced a great show of Frozen, and it was just great. Friday night of the performance last week, it was almost a standing room only. We had to get extra chairs and bring them in. So we had a lot of support from the community and the parents and everything, so we were very excited about that. That was our first time offering that. We know this is going to continue to grow, and in the future, you know, we'll make some adjustments on things we learned, but very excited to be offering that. The administrators for the past two days, yesterday and today, went on their annual retreat, and so we go there and we work on a lot of different things, from all the administrative things, planning out the school year, goals. We bring in professional development speakers, and we go to the exotic location of the high school media center, right here. So that's the retreat. We just changed the seating around a little bit, and we bring in some food. We just got some good news, just today, actually, on, um, let's see, it was from, the rankings of the best high schools. U.S. News and World Report put Montville Township High School in the top 7%. And there was another ranking, I think it was either Tap Into, or I don't know where they got the information, but they ranked us in the top 15% for New Jersey. With that said, if you take out the schools that are magnet schools or things like that, we're definitely in the top 10% when you compare like schools. So that's just great news for starting off the school year. And the other good news is the federal government decided to unfreeze our Title I through IV money. So that became very controversial at the beginning of the summer, and they unfroze that money, so now we are set to receive $177,000, and that goes to all types of programs for our students. So we're very happy that that money was reinstated, that we receive every single year. So that was good news. All right, the last thing is, Mario, you ready? You want to queue that up? So each year, I have to read the summary report for, for this one is the 2425 school year. Can you just make that a little bit bigger, Mario, if you can? And just to quickly summarize, this is for the HIB harassment, intimidation, and bullying reports, and how, what they do is, we have a committee of teachers, administrators, and a parent. They sit in this committee, and then they have this, I don't know, how many pages, multiple pages long, and they look at this information, and they try to see where can we do better? Do we need more professional development? Do we need more of this? Do we need, you know, all these different things? And they rate themselves. So these numbers change a little bit each year, but I'm just going to quickly summarize, this is a self-assessment scoring. So Lazar gave themselves one point higher in Core Element of Number One, which is our HIB programs and approaches, as well as William Mason. Lazar then went down one point on the training of Board of Ed HIB policies. So that's something they feel they didn't do as much as they should have done last year, and they will try to work on that this year. But then they decided in Core Element Three, Other Staff Instruction and Training Programs, they went up plus two. So, um, so that was great to see. Moving over to Number Six, the School Level HIB Incident Reporting Procedure, Lazar gave themselves one point higher, and unfortunately, though, they downgraded themselves two points in the Core Element Number Seven, which is the Investigation Procedure. And we've had a lot of talks and trainings about that, so those things do adjust over the school years. And the last column is Hildale went down one point for HIB reporting. So, pretty consistent. It's good to see, you see a little bit of movement between the schools and the different categories. It does show you that they are taking these things seriously and looking over each one of the questions each year. So, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Business administrator?
Just, I wanted to summarize a project that we had been working on in terms of transportation. So two years ago, the, we came to the board and requested the opportunity to purchase a vehicle in order to begin to pull different routes that were being run throughout the district for different students back under our control. Currently, the way that we transport the students in Montville is that we use outside providers, particularly for our special ed community. We felt that we could provide better service, and we asked to do that. The board granted us that opportunity. We added an additional vehicle. And this year, we were a little more ambitious in that we requested three new vehicles. So we are at a fleet of five small vehicles, four being 24-passengers, one being a nine-passenger vehicle. And the idea here was that we felt we could provide the services better, but we also knew that we could make savings off of the, taking these particular routes back in. At this point, we have geared up for the 25, 26-year, and all of our drivers' schedules have now been set. We have pulled back a number of different routes, everything from special ed to midday routes going up to County College of Morris and to different voc tech programs that are offered. And if I take the amount that we are saving by not offering those contracts outside of the district against the cost of the drivers and the maintenance of the vehicles, we are netting a $240,000 profit or savings as a result of pulling those particular routes back in-house. Additionally, we get the benefit of it being our drivers. There are cameras that are on order to be installed and GPS tracking systems to be installed on those vehicles as part of this program. And this is some of the ways that we are attempting to try to look at the programs that we have and see if we can offer them to the students, at least at the same level of quality, if not better quality, for less.
And you are doing the training for the drivers?
All the drivers are being trained, which is actually a state requirement. One of those trainings is to the walking of the buses, the reviewing of the buses, what they do when they do the drop-offs, what they do when they come back to the depot, all of that.
And I just want to thank the business office and the transportation office, really looking into this. This has been in the works for the past year, and we're finally able to see significant savings, and the savings will be each year going forward. So it's very exciting. We have more potential moving forward with this, and this is just one of the ways that we're continuing trying to find ways to save the taxpayers the money, to try and get creative with the budgets getting tighter and tighter each year, and we're very excited about this new initiative.
Okay, then, if there are no questions, we'll move on to the committee reports. Karen, Facilities Finance?
Thank you, David. Between Dr. Gorman and Ms. Slunt, that was the bulk of my report. Good news with the buses, for sure. Good news with the title money being unfrozen, and good news with the security vestibules moving along. So I thank you as well. The community does too, for your efforts in trying to secure revenue for our schools.
Thank you. Michelle, Curriculum?
Yeah, I've been in touch with Mrs. Woodring, and we're trying to, we're going to be setting a meeting for the beginning of September, so it should be before the next, the September board meeting.
John, Policy?
Policy met yesterday.
Microphone?
Policy met yesterday. It was an action-packed agenda. We discussed many of the standard Strauss estimate updates to our policies to be in line with the New Jersey Code and statute. We also discussed cellphone usage, which we'll talk about more in Old Business. In the high school, we discussed noise makers being used at the graduation ceremonies in which the policy committee was in favor of banning these noise makers due to, you know, just the obnoxious sound and pain to the ears of the people sitting in front of the people blowing those noise makers, especially during the inside portions when it was raining this year. We had some complaints from the public as well on that. We discussed virtual attendance to meetings, and I don't know if now is a good time to have a further discussion, maybe we'll talk about that in New Business. And I have a lot of notes here, but mostly of the, a new policy that was mandated by the state regarding sun protection. We have decided to move forward with, you know, just allowing students to bring their own suntan lotion in and applying it themselves in a reasonable manner. Sunscreen, what did I say?
Suntan lotion.
Suntan lotion, thank you, Karen. Some of us Italians like suntan lotion more.
Yep, you're doing a good job of that.
I was in Wildwood this past week. Good thing I'm not there this week. But anyway, back to the report, resignation and removal. Some of the, again, updates were just to be in line with the statute changes, budget preparation, and that's all.
Thank you very much. Joe, Communication? No report. Okay, Christine, Safety, you there?
No report, Dave.
Okay. Karen, New Jersey School Boards?
During the summer, it's been, you know, pretty, pretty quiet. However, there is some news in that the elected Vice President of Legislation, who was elected in May, has resigned the vice presidency position, which creates vacancy for VP of Legislation. The nominating committee, it has reconvened, it's the same nominating committee as the one that set the agenda for the May Delegate Assembly. And so we are, encourage people, if they're interested, to apply. The interviews will be on September 20th.
Okay, thank you. Mike is not here. Joe, Morris County Educational Services?
They had a meeting last Wednesday, just same executive session business, just talking about the cost of transportation increases and demand, sorry, the decrease in enrollment at the Central Park School.
Okay, and then Drug Awareness?
They don't meet again in September.
Until September, okay. John, Athletic Boosters, anything?
No, and I will get you an update on when the next meeting is, it should be coming up shortly.
Okay, then back to Karen. Oh, actually, we'll just skip all the schools, unless someone has something important to say. Okay, so this is the first public participation section. If you have any comments about items on the agenda. Okay, so this would be items on the agenda. We will be talking about cellphones and other things in Old Business and New Business, so if your comments are then, you can come up then. Okay, so seeing none, let's move on to Consent Resolution, Items I through N. Motion, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on the minutes? Section I, Section J, Section K, we have an addendum, and would you like to discuss it? Got two again. Okay.
Yes, so the addendum in Section K is the termination of a contract. The work at Hildale has not been satisfactory, so we are terminating the contact, contract with that provider, and we'll be looking for a new construction company to finish that project relatively soon. So I'm asking the board to take action on this, and so we can begin the process.
Any questions on that? Okay. Questions on Section L, Personnel? Do you have an addendum there?
Yes, so we have one retiree, and just want to quickly read into it. After 23 years of inspiring students with the beauty of Spanish and Italian, Ms. Diapolito is leaving behind a legacy of language, culture, and connection. Just as meaningful is the way she has supported her colleagues, supervisors, with her wisdom, kindness, and collaboration, leaving an indelible mark on the entire Lazar school community. We wish her well in retirement.
And there were also a couple other corrections to Item L3.
Correct. So I'm just going to read them into the minutes here. For L3, Number 15, the salary is going to be changed to $390.73. Line 27, the correction for the effective date is 8/25/25. Line 38, the correction for the salary is $9,028.18. The effective date for that, the same line, is January 28/26. Line 39 has a salary of $6,965.89 with an effective date of 8/27/25 and a termination date of January 27/26. And Line 56 will be struck from the, from the, from the minutes. And Line 57, the termination date will be January 12/26. The reason for all these corrections is just that there's so many things going on with hirings, people coming in and out, and moving parts. This is not typical to have so many corrections, but we wanted to get them right before we started the school year and start paying people.
Well, you've had so few in the other meetings that you had to catch up, I suppose. Okay, questions on Section M, Curriculum? None. Question, nothing on Section N, the policies that were discussed yesterday will be first read, I guess, next meeting? So, about a vote, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes, abstain on Section K.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrazino?
Yes.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Ooh, nope, sorry. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
And then Dr. Modrak.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to Old Business. This is where we can discuss cellphones. So John, you want to?
Sure, I'll kick it off. You know, we brought up this a couple times now, banning cellphones use in the high school. Is it appropriate? What the best way to do it is? We discussed two things, really. We'll bifurcate this issue in, in one, what to do this year, in this upcoming year, and there was discussion, really related, falling into three bucks, either do nothing, continue with our policy as is, two, doing a ban, a complete ban, just, but with no real, you know, not those wander pouches that we discussed, just banning them, you know, at the administration and teachers policing, or three, just banning them in the classroom and allowing them to, to use them, you know, during periods, in between periods, and during lunchtime. That was just for this upcoming year, or as soon as we could legally adopt a policy, you know, for this coming year, which wouldn't, which would be maybe a couple weeks or a month into the start of the school year. That was one issue, and the other issue was going forward, best way to get a committee together to look at using these wander pouches and doing a more permanent ban on cellphones. So with that, I'd like to open it up to the board, I guess, on Issue One first.
First of all, the, what is the policy at the elementary schools and Lazar? So the, well, the policy is basically?
Want me to recite it for you?
Well, you know, it's basically, there's no cellphone usage at the elementaries and Lazar. If you're caught with a cellphone, I guess they take it away from you and either return it, second offense, I think they take it away, make your parents come get it, something like that. And this, so the idea would be, one of the suggestions was to have a Lazar-type policy at the high school, right?
Yes.
So that, that would be banning the cellphones, but not using a wander pouch, a yonder pouch, I should say.
I just want to clarify, cellphones, you're using that word generically, that means smartwatches and any other type of, similar type of device?
Thank you.
Okay.
I have comments, but I have a quick question first, because one thing John said is keeping our policy as is at the high school. Is there a specific policy at the high school, or is it just that it's allowed? Oh, oh, right, I'm sorry, I know what that is, but like, maybe clarify for everybody here what the specific policy is at the high school, just summarize it, so.
So just in a nutshell, the cellphones are at teacher discretion. So some teachers have, we'll call them cellphone pouches. You come in the classroom, they require the kids to put them in the pouch, and they're not to be touched during the class. Other teachers say they put their cellphone right there on the desk, and they have to be out at all times. Some teachers say put them in their backpacks. So it does vary. A lot of teachers do allow them in the, to be used in class for instructional purposes. So it does vary, and right now, it's, it's on teacher discretion. Students are allowed to use them throughout the rest of the day, so if they're at lunch, they're allowed to use them as well.
Okay, so I do want to make a couple of comments, I have some thoughts. I completely understand where this discussion is coming from. I have believed for a long time that our generation was not prepared for our kids coming up the way they have with technology, and we're just now starting to catch up and understand doctors, psychologists, administrators, parents, trying to figure out how to navigate it. Honestly, we're trying to figure out how to navigate it ourselves. I am not, at this moment, in favor of doing a ban at the high school for several reasons, but I think the discussion has to proceed. I think it's a good discussion to have. I think that, first of all, I really would want, I know that Mr. Sanford proactively had done a survey of the staff, and my understanding, and tell me if I'm categorizing this wrong, is that the staff is frustrated because there's not some type of consistent policy. So one teacher lets them be on the desk, another one collects them, and if, they don't feel, I think, that they have a consistent policy where they're this kind of police and don't know what's right or wrong, what they're supposed to do. I think that we have to help support the teachers to have a more consistent policy than what we have now. So I definitely agree that we need to go there. As someone who has two kids in college, I see at college that it's, you know, completely at their discretion, you know, free. Some teachers and professors in class will have different policies the way they have here. I don't think we're preparing students for the reality of the world that we're bringing them to, if we just have a total ban on cellphones in high school. The fact is, this is how we live today, and I want to be a responsible cellphone user. I want my kids to learn to be responsible cellphone users. And I don't think a total ban is preparing them from high school to real life to college to jobs. I also think there's a reality that there are kids with, it is how we communicate today. I recognize they have Chromebooks, and there's a lot that they can do on their Chromebooks, even in the classroom environment. But, you know, checking in at lunch with a friend, a grandparent, a parent who's sick, I'm working after school, I might get a message from my, my, my job, that's a reality of how we manage life today. And so I, I think there's a responsible way to have a policy about cellphone use without banning it. And I, you know, you know what? Years ago, I don't even know what happened to it, we had homework-free nights. Maybe there are certain cellphone-free days at lunch, try it once a month or something like that, where people, we can give them the experience of understanding that level of communication that I am deeply sorry is missing. You know, well, my kids went to college and the doors are all closed, and the way we used to have everything open, and it's a whole different world today, but it's our reality, it's the world today, and I don't think we're preparing them for real life if we just say that we're banning cellphones. So I understand where this discussion is coming from. I think a broader discussion has to happen. I think our policy is not clear enough and doesn't support our teachers enough. And so I'd like to see policy and administration working together. And then my other piece of it is that I really, you know, there's talk a little bit in the community, I think the community has heard, we're starting to have this discussion. I, I know that there are some people who adamantly think that they should be banned, and I think there's other people who adamantly think they shouldn't. I'm not sure what percentage we're talking about. I'm curious, is it a vocal 20% who think it should be banned, or vocal 20% who think it shouldn't? Because that would help guide me as an elected official also. So I think some type of survey to the parent community could help us. So I don't think rushing into a ban now personally is where I am, and unless I'm convinced otherwise, I don't see how I'd support that right now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm going to sum it the other way. At the very, very least, I'd like to see a total ban in class, and I say that with a small asterisk, that there are certain things like digital photography classes and things like that, where the phone is an integral part of the curriculum, where you'd have to make a policy. But I think a lot of the teachers are just having a lot of problems with saying, I can't compete with Instagram, I can't compete with TikTok, I'm trying to teach, and the kids, they're texting somebody, they're watching a video. There comes a time you say, kids don't have to be attached to the cellphone 24 hours a day. Now, during other periods of the day, I can see some arguments both ways. I'm leaning toward a more restrictive policy, because I also understand Michelle's point that says we want to prepare our kids for, you know, the real world. By the same token, they've got, you know, from the time they're 18 on to prepare for the real world. There are abuses, there's social abuses, bullying, things like that that go on with the cellphones, and I know a lot of it goes on outside school, there's not much we can do about it. There's also a part of me that says that maybe we want to teach some of our kids to say, there's a way to communicate other than texting. Nothing drives me up a wall than when I see two kids sitting next to each other texting. So, you know, I'm very interested in hearing people's perception, what, what goes on with the phone during non-academic parts of the day, but I would adamant, I would definitely support a ban on use of the cellphone during class time. I think you're detracting from class time when you, when kids use a cellphone. It is a distraction, and I'm sorry, nobody can convince me otherwise. I know kids are out there texting and watching the phone while they should be listening to the teacher.
Thank you. Caitlin?
So, my feeling on this is, we have the very strict policy at elementary school and Lazar. You get to the high school, you're older, you're maturing, you take on more responsibilities in a lot of avenues of your life when you get to this age range. I don't believe high schoolers should be kept to the same strict policy as middle schoolers. They're very different maturity-wise, mentally, in their capabilities. I think the policy needs to adapt to the correct age group. I understand the importance for supporting the teachers and knowing what they need from the district, from us, in order to feel like they can say, that cellphone can't be out in my classroom, because I get it, you don't want to be the mean teacher that, like, says, no phones in my room, but next door, everybody has their phones out. So I understand the need for a stricter policy. I am very against a complete ban. I think that's treating them like toddlers. I think it's very- I think it's very difficult to look at this if you don't have a child in this age range or if you have older children and they didn't go through high school with this amount of technology and cellphone use. Because it changes so much from year to year, from month to month, that these kids know more about technology than any of us do. And it's used in such a different way that I feel like it's irresponsible to lock it up from them, take it, not, we're not talking about locking it up. It's irresponsible for us to put such strict parameters on them as if we don't trust them to learn the appropriate ways to use their phones. I think that's a disservice from all of us. They need to figure out how to have their phones in their bags and not out distracting them while they're in classrooms. Like, so it, if there's a way to make the policy so that we can support the teachers to say, not in my room, without having to go to the extreme, I think that's the middle ground that we need to find. I, I don't believe telling them they can't have it at lunch is the way to go. I know there are children who have, you talk about the mental health issues with cellphones and how cellphones create anxiety and depression if they're, you know, just scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. Well, there's a lot of mental health issues and anxiety caused by the person who's sitting by themselves in the lunchroom because they don't know how to interact or are so stressed out from their classes that they just want to put their AirPods in and listen to their music and decompress for 20 minutes before going on with the rest of their day. If you take that piece away from some of these kids, that will cause more issues and more harm to them. So you have to look at both sides of the coin, you have to see that there's pros and cons of both sides and find that middle ground.
Okay. Anybody else?
I agree with my two colleagues. I would not be in favor of a total ban. I did read the information that Dr. Gorman provided to us, the student cellphone use, Montpel Township High School teacher perspectives. And my sense was that, well, first, let me say, there were teachers, there are teachers who allow it and teachers who don't. But what I heard over and over again in this, this report was a need for a policy that gives the teachers the ability to enforce whatever, whatever they decide. That's what I heard the strongest. In fact, when, if you look at the, some of the percentages here, the frequency of allowed use, even for classrooms that are allowing usage, it's only 25% of the class time. I would definitely be interested in hearing what the parents have to say. I think we had mentioned maybe a parent survey at, at our last meeting. And what I find a real interesting dilemma is, what do we do with smartwatches? And what do we do with up-and-coming eyewear that has the same technology as our watches and our cellphones? So how do we, how do we resolve that? I agree with the concept of being parents that are attempting to teach our children responsible use of their cellphones. When we have dinner around the table, which is unfortunately not that often, but it does happen, just, I insist that they put their phones away so we can talk. That's, you know, parental prerogative there. So yeah, I, I would, I would be in favor in beefing up the policy. I would not be in favor of a complete ban. In fact, I think the classroom is, if it's going to be used, that's exactly the location that we want them to be using them so that they can get, you know, whatever assignments have been assigned to them done.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with my colleagues here as well. You know, I feel like there should be some sort of policy crafted that should not be a total ban on cellphones, but to find a way to support the teachers, support the administration, and give the students the option to, if they need to use them as the cellphones, use them during the free periods. You know, as, as Caitlin said, there's a lot of social anxiety that goes on some of these students, we don't want to cut them completely off.
Dave?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. So I, I am not in favor of banning cellphones as well. I think that Caitlin brought up an excellent point. Our special needs students, those who have social anxieties, those who are on the autistic spectrum, they, many of them, and it's not for all, but really do need their phones to help calm them down, whether it's listening to music or playing video games and during lunchtime or a, a time that they have study and they have free time, it's, it's therapeutic to them. Secondly, I do think we need a policy for our teachers, for sure, to help them. And I also think that students do need that time during lunch or other times, many times when, you know, my son was in school, mom, I forgot a book, he could call me or text me, or I, you know, I forgot something for wrestling after practice, or I called him to make sure he can make a certain medical appointment. So to have that connection with your child during the school day, they are young adults, they should have that opportunity and parents should have that opportunity. If a child is having a rough day, to be able to call their parent is, is so important. Especially with, with whatever someone is going through mental health or crises at home, it's good to have that connection. So for, you know, all those reasons, a, a policy is a great thing to think about to help support the, the teachers and the staff. But remembering that it's the, the students that come first and, and that is really most important.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
I think it's important to also keep in mind, like, when I say I'm not in favor of banning, it doesn't mean I think the kids should be sitting there scrolling social media. Because I think that's what comes to mind first when everyone thinks about kids on their phone, is that they're just, you know, on their apps, playing games, doing social media, which I'm sure at times in the day, that is what they're doing. But by saying not to ban phones is not me saying I'm okay with that. So I think that clarification is important because there are ways to use the phones in the classroom academically and not for social media purposes. So that plays into why I disagree with the ban.
Can I just, because I want to clarify, because what Mike said right after he, I spoke, I, like, I, I don't know if I made it clear that I really do believe a policy that helps the teachers and enforces something in the classroom. I don't know what that's going to look like yet, but I, I believe wholeheartedly that that is needed, again, echoing what Caitlin said too, because they should never be scanning social media in class. And so I think we need to figure out consequences if that is found out, or you, you know what I mean? Or maybe it's banning it totally in class, I don't know, depending. But that is lacking and that is needed. And that's, I think, where the policy discussion should focus.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so, so I, I don't think the crux of, at least my reason for wanting a ban has been discussed at all yet, which is the mental health of the kids. Having an environment where you're not even thinking about your phone because you don't have it, your friend doesn't have it, and nobody, you know, ideally, you know, I, I see arguments, you know, you want to, you want to talk to your parent. Well, you have a Chromebook, you could email your parent anytime you want, you could email their, 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 their phone number, it could go to their texts, all the kids know how to do it. You, you could easily get in touch with it, with your parent. I don't think that's a valid, you know, re- reason for needing a cellphone. I, I think just that, that, I, I think that point has been being missed by some of the board members here, that having that seven hours of anxiety-free time a day is important for these kids. And, and you mentioned, you know, life preparation. You know, we, we don't allow high school students, you know, unfettered access to many things because they are too young. And, and, you know, and in ca- to, to, to say that, you know, in college they have unfettered access to their cellphones and that's why they need it in high school, that to me doesn't hold weight because that's another step, like Mike brought up, towards maturity. And I think at this stage in these young kids' life where their minds aren't developed fully, having that anxiety-free time, even if it's not the full day because they'll have full access to their phone after school, is important for their development. And I think it'll help all of them, more so than, than the detriments of the arguments against it that has grown up. The other thing is someone brought up, you know, other devices, I think, Tom, you mentioned, you know, the, the policy would cover all other devices, so whether it's eyeglasses or smartwatches and things like that, they would be banned as well. And then I, I also wanted to remind the board, yes, we, we are going to go through with surveys and, um, for, for, for both parents, you know, as long, as long as the board president directs it.
No, no, as long as the board is in favor of doing those things.
As long as the board is in favor of doing those things, I think it is. But, you know, that, that's more, I, I think for the total ban, I, I think this discussion was more for, I thought this discussion was more for a, a more immediate action for this Yeah, that, that, that's it, that's all I got.
So it, it sounds to me like what the, everybody's saying is, something needs to be done, but because it is such a hot topic, I, it sounds like nobody's ready to say, like, yes, either academic ban or full day ban, but more along the lines of rewriting the policy to support the teachers.
Yeah. Okay. Before we go further, I just want, I, I had fun the other night looking into this and looking at all the different issues that people have been bringing up about this. I'd just like to go through them real quick if I could. So the arguments generally in favor of allowing cellphones in schools would be, for instance, as an educational tool. Okay? So you need a stopwatch or, or whatever, on, you know, you use your phone. The counter argument to that is you have a Chromebook, and a Chromebook does everything your phone can do except social media. So I'm not sure that really counts. The thing about modernization, you know, preparing kids for the workplace with, you know, they have access to their phones in the workplace, but if you get caught scrolling in the workplace, your boss is going to have a real problem with that. There are restrictions in the workplace, in schools, every, in courts even. You get caught with a cellphone in court, well, you know, the judge is not happy. So there are restrictions in the real world. We're not talking about doing something which is not real world. And, but the big one is teaching self-control. A lot of people have spoken about this, there's, you know, I would agree with John, having unfettered access to your phone is, is not good. We're only, we're not banning the phone at home, where we would be saying, can't use it in school. Six hours, six hours a day not using your phone. You have it 16 hours a day at home, you have it all weekend, and if that's not enough time to have a phone, I'm not sure what is. Parental involvement, parents, in my opinion, should be teaching self-control. I don't, you know, that's not really what the teachers should be teaching, I think the parents should be more involved in that. And, and to be perfectly honest, maybe separating from your device during the day is not a bad learning opportunity. You learn, you can be away from your phone, you don't have to have it with you all the time. Okay? So I think that's an important teaching opportunity right there. As far as developmental readiness, they're still kids, they are not yet adults. They, even adults have a hard time dealing with cellphones. Because the cellphone and the social media algorithms are designed to addict you. They are, they are designed to grab your attention and hold it there because that's how they generate revenue. Okay? There is a cognitive burden placed on the students. It takes time to reset, once you're distracted, it takes time to reset where you are and get back into the lesson, so it's a disruption to the classroom. And, you know, let's face it, the kids, it's very tempting, those algorithms are really tempting. So I think it pulls the kids away from the important matters which are paying attention in school. The ones, the arguments against allowing cellphones would be, it's a distraction to learning. I think all the teachers have agreed, it's a distraction. Okay? It is definitely associated with poor academic performance. And I know of no study that says cellphones are linked to better performance. Okay? So if someone has that study, I'd love to see it. See, it limi- oh, it limits real-world interactions between people. Okay? When you get out, as I mentioned, your boss is not going to want to see you scrolling. You're going to have to talk to your employ, your fellow employees, your coworkers, customers, management, whoever, especially the management who are all boomers and not really into cellphones, right? So those interpersonal skills have to be developed at some point. And I think it's important, even in high school, that they work on those skills. Also, the phone develops, can develop a dependency. I've seen kids with dependencies on their phones that they cannot, they physically can't put that phone down, they are so addicted to it. It causes anxiety and it decreases the cognitive abilities of the students. There's cyberbullying, social issues, cheating, there's also the issue of privacy, people using their cellphones to videotape each other when they should not be. So those are some of the arguments for and against, and I just wanted them mentioned. But now I would like to ask for a consensus from the board. It sounds like we need to have the policy committee draw up some surveys. First thing we need to do is we need to find out from the policy, have the policy committee draw up these surveys, survey our parents, our teachers, and even our students, you're welcome, our students, and find out their beliefs and attitudes towards cellphones and banning or not banning. Oh, and by the way, I would, I would submit that half bans don't work. I mean, that's what we have at the high school. I don't think that works. I, I think that we either need to do a full ban or not a full ban. But first thing we need, surveys. Okay? And I think this needs to go back to the policy as well, policy committee, to talk about updating the current policy to be a little more restrictive, at least in the short term, to give us some options about what might be possibilities that we can vote on and discuss at the next meeting. Do I have a consensus that this is something?
Dave, before, before you ask for the consensus, I would just suggest that, I, I know there are some members of the public here that want to talk on this specific issue and, and, and not any other issue. Would it make sense for the board to hear them before we?
I, I think we're just going to stick to the schedule.
But if they talk after we decide something, what's the purpose of them being here?
What do you think, Mr.?
I don't know how to turn this mic.
Press the button.
So I might approach this slightly differently if I'm in, make a suggestion. I, I would not deviate from the schedule. This is not the time for public participation. I would make the first big cut and ask the board for a consensus differentiating two positions. Those people who want a total ban and those people who want something other than a total ban. It sounds like the answer is going to be that a majority will want something other than a total ban. And if that's the case, then you know what to instruct the policy committee to work on.
Okay. I thought that, I have, okay.
And I just want to clarify, the, the policy committee would not be making the survey, I'd be working with my administrators to do that. I could run it by the board and the policy committee, but we would be doing all the work, yeah.
It would be good to have the policy committee input at least on that, if not the whole board. So I would appreciate that.
But Dave, so if I could say though, to have to make a decision now as to a ban or not a total ban, I feel like I'd be making a decision based upon incomplete data because there are, we have surveys coming out, I want to hear more opinions. I mean, I, I know how I'm leaning right now, but-
Just for the purpose of, just for the purpose- Just for the purpose of pointing the policy committee in a direction when they talk, not for the purpose of making a decision.
For this coming year, we had discussed that this would be something that we would implement this year. We can discuss, you know, a total ban or some other more formal policy later, I think, and that would be a very good thing to do in the spring. But I think that...
Right. So the clarification that I'm hearing is you're going to vote right now that we're not, we're going to ban or not ban the cell phones come this, say, October, and continue to look at this, and then probably in six months, come up with a more formulated opinion and idea of what we want to do going forward for the following school year.
This wouldn't be voting on any ban or not ban, this would be asking the policy committee to come up with policy options.
You're going to ask the board now to see how many people favor a total ban. Because if five people favored a total ban, then you'd be giving the policy committee a different direction from if five people didn't favor a total ban. So you're not going to really vote so much as you're going to ask people for their point of view.
Okay. Then I would like to ask for a consensus from the board. Would you be in favor of the policy committee designing a policy in favor of a total ban? If you are in favor of that, raise your hand. Got two? I see two. If you are in favor of the policy committee creating or crafting policy, that would be less than a total ban, but still an improvement over the current policy, a little bit more direction over the current policy, raise your hand. So the consensus is that the policy committee should draft some sample policy to have something more descriptive than what we currently have, but not be a total ban.
And I just want some clarification on that. So am I doing the surveys and getting a high school committee together to inform the policy committee, which this is going to take a couple of months? So it's not like the policy committee is going to come up with something in the next...
Well, they can work on their own draft, but...
But don't they want to wait till we get a little more input from people or...
Yes, I think so. I think we need the data before we can come up with a new policy.
The original thought of the policy committee was to first come up with something for this year, more immediate, and not wait for the surveys to come in. The thought was to wait for surveys for next year and when we make a more permanent policy. So I mean, I feel like we're going in the direction of, you know, now we're going to, you know, back to the policy committee. By the time next meeting comes, we're going to, we might have surveys in, we're going to have made a couple of months. I don't see the direction.
I don't see that the majority of the board thinks we need an immediate total ban action. Like, I'm sent, I'm hearing that the board thinks we need to do something, but immediately acting for a ban in the next month is not how we're feeling comfortable moving. So I know that the policy committee discussed that respectfully, but I just don't think that I feel comfortable and the majority of the board feels comfortable doing that so quickly like that. I wholeheartedly agree, this has to happen. It just has to happen in the right way, with the right input, the right, you know, thinking it through and defining where that policy is. I also, I don't know if Steve would be the one, I am, I know that it was, I wasn't available, and I know that there was a trip to Ramsey High School, which is a school that is doing a total ban. But I'd like to hear what other high schools who are doing more partial approaches, like are there schools who have made policy that is somewhere in between? So like, I just, I think there's more research and more data to do. We need to do something, especially because the teachers are struggling with how to deal within their classrooms. That I don't think anyone disagrees with. And I think we all agree, there's bad things about the cell phones. And like, you know, bad things, but I'm not sure that everybody understands there are reasons why we can't, I very much believe we can't do a total ban. So I think we need to find middle ground here.
I just think, but this direction we've given, to formulate a policy for a less-than-a-total ban, I think is such an ill-defined direction. I mean, how do we define less-than-a-total ban? Is a total ban banned for everything but lunch? Is it banned for everything but lunch and the time between periods? I mean, I don't really, we're trying to tell the administration to come up with a policy when I don't even think we really know what we want.
Okay. I'm going to say that my request of the policy committee is not that you create one policy, but you create your options. What are the policy options? Create a couple of them that can, that you feel span the width of the comments that you've heard tonight. And I would ask that the superintendent start with preparing the surveys and that you at least run those surveys by the policy committee before sending them out. But I would like to get them out sooner than later, early in September would be best, if possible, although probably later in September.
Yeah, I mean, we have to think about this because if I'm going to form a policy committee at the high school and get input for what questions we're going to be asking, things like that, I mean, October is more realistic that I'd be able to get something out to the public or to start talking about this.
Okay, then, then if it's that's reasonable, then that's what we have to go with. But I think in the meantime, John, you need to start talking to the policy committee members and start formulating some policy options for us. And then we'll just discuss those at the next meeting.
Just to be clear, for the surveys of the parents and the teachers and the students, is that going to be limited to only a partial ban? Or are we going to ask them if they...
No, it's about their attitudes and beliefs around cell phones. It's not about, it can be questions about, do you support a ban? But it should also be questions about, how do you use cell phones? How much do you use cell phones? How do they affect your work? How do they affect your, you know, mental status? How do they, you know, how do you feel about interacting with people? There are those types of questions, and those are in the survey questions. And that's what's going to be discussed amongst the committee that he forms.
Dave, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Who, I believe this survey, if it's only affecting the high school students and teachers, I would only ask that the survey goes to those folks. Because when I speak to elementary, middle school, they're, they love, they really want a ban, but they already kind of have one. It's the older students, I think, that should be focused on, and their families. You may have said it, but maybe I didn't hear.
Well, yeah. As Steve pointed out, eventually, all those parents will be high school student parents. I think maybe if you want to include some demographic information that we can split out the high school parents from the middle school and elementary school parents, I think that would be a reasonable thing to do. And that's easy enough to do. Once you have that demographic information, you can parse your data easily that way. So we can take a look at that and see what, if there's a difference between the high school, middle school, and elementary school.
Yeah, because they have different experience and they, they're living through it, so...
Yes, as we all live through it.
The document that was given to us by Dr. Gorman, the student cellphone use, what the teachers are asking for is not a district-wide policy. The teachers are asking specifically for a school-wide policy, which is the high school. So there's, you know, that should be clear from the get-go.
Okay. John, understood?
Yeah, because that was my understanding.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for that productive old business. Let's move on to new business. Zoom call-ins. Hi, Christine. So there was a discussion about calling in to the meetings. Currently, our policy does not forbid it. It does not specifically say anything about Zoom call-ins. And so during the policy meeting, we had discussed whether or not to have Zoom call-ins. So, John, you want to...
Yep, that came up. I'm still not exactly sure what the reason for that was, but it did come up. And this is the first virtual call-in we've had in my two and a half years on the board. Thanks, Christine, for breaking the mold. I think it's an excellent resource. I don't think we should really change the policy at all because it's not something that's being abused or taken advantage of in any way. I like the flexibility of being able to call in virtually personally, even though I haven't used that. And, you know, I could understand from some of the policy committee discussion that maybe we should put something in place so it doesn't get abused in the future. With that said, I think there was some discussion on maybe making a cap for, you know, how many virtual call-ins you're allowed per year. But, you know, my opinion is we don't need to change anything.
Let's find out real quick from Steve. What is the law?
Here's what the current state of the law in New Jersey is. There is no requirement to allow remote participation. There is no prohibition against allowing remote participation with one exception. You may not have remote participation for closed session. So this is purely a discussion about what happens in open session. The rules have been the same for decades. A person, unless the board chooses to ban it, a person may participate remotely if they make arrangements in advance, and the arrangements are such that the person participating remotely can hear everybody, and everybody can hear the person participating remotely. It does not need to be Zoom. It has traditionally been a telephone. So it can be any kind of electronic communication device. It is common in districts that do have written policies to, as John said, limit, or I think it was John, it might have been somebody else, limit the number of meetings a person can miss and participate in remotely so it doesn't become an every-meeting thing. It is not permitted to have a majority of the board participate remotely. In order to have a lawful quorum, you must have a majority of the board at the meeting. Other than that, you can do pretty much whatever you want.
And what about committee meetings? So policy curriculum meetings?
Committee meetings are not public meetings. You can do whatever you want.
Okay. Well, closed session isn't public, but...
Closed session isn't a committee meeting.
I know, but you can't have a call-in for a closed.
You can't have a call-in for a closed because there are privacy concerns. If you have an executive session and you have Christine participating remotely, we, although I trust Christine completely, we really can't be sure that there isn't somebody sitting on the other side of the room or that this transmission isn't being susceptible to being heard by somebody else. That's the reason for the closed session.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Does anybody have any other comments about this?
I have a question. How did this come about? Why did we start discussing this?
Because it came up that there were, there was no policy, basically. There had been talk about having Zoom call-ins or remote call-ins. We've had them in the past.
Not that I recall.
I recall having a...
Almost 20 years.
Really? I seem to have a recollection of one.
I go back longer than 20 years, and I can tell you without doubt, this board has had remote call-ins for participation in meetings. I've set them up.
Not that I recall, Steve.
I did, I actually, when we voted as a board to hire Superintendent Gorman, I felt it, when I was not there, I felt it was very important for me as a board member to support our new superintendent and to vote for him with my voice. And superintendent, our last superintendent, used her cellphone so that I could participate, and I was able to hear everyone. And I was so pleased. And tonight, I wanted to be a part of the meeting because I knew you were going to be talking about cell phones. And community members have shared their thoughts with me. And as a volunteer, as an elected person, I felt it was my obligation, even though I'm on vacation, to be with all of you and share my thoughts and concerns and, if there was a policy, to vote for it. But I'm glad I'm here.
Okay, thank you. I'll be honest, I'm not in favor of calling in. I do believe that we have an obligation to be here. I have changed my travel plans personally to be here so that I could just be here in person. I think it's important because, again, you get FaceTime, you get to interact with your colleagues in a more direct and personal way. I think it is important to be here as much as possible. I understand that there are times, there are causes where you cannot be here at a meeting. But I think that, in general, every effort should be made to attend meetings, every effort should be made to attend them in person. And I'm worried that if we don't have something, that sometime in the future, someone could abuse it. Okay? Someone could say, oh, I don't want to be at that meeting because that group is coming and they're going to create grief. Right, Mike?
But Dave, you could do that now and just be absent. It's more for, you know, when you can't make it, but you really want to vote on something. That's when it comes in. And to have that flexibility, to take that flexibility away in today's world, I think, is, you know...
Don't you know the calendar ahead of time? Didn't you get a calendar at the beginning of the year when we had our meetings?
If someone, if I want to book a trip to Italy a year from now, I'm not looking at the board agenda calendar, I'm sorry.
Well, first and third Tuesdays of the month, count on them. So...
I just want to clarify, my understanding is because we don't have a policy, we follow the law. And the law is that it's allowed, just like Christine is allowed to do it tonight. And our discussion is, should we write a more specific policy, either saying it's not allowed at all, or it's allowed unlimited, or it's allowed maybe with some type of limitation? Like, you could do two a year, you know, or three a year. Is that, am I understanding where we are correctly? Okay.
Yes.
So, again, the directive of the consensus of this board could be to go to the policy meeting, policy committee, and define a policy for us. So, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to having a policy, I feel like with some limitations. I think that, you know, there could be, you know, legitimate reasons, but, you know, maybe a limit to like two a year or something like that would feel right, just not having really thought or talked about it, you know, too much more. But like, I could be in favor of that with, I think, some common sense limitations.
And can I, Steve, can I ask you?
Sure.
In the districts that have limitations on call-in participation, what are the typical limitations that are put?
Exactly what people have been talking about here, not more than two or three times a year. Certainly don't want people doing it at every meeting. I've been here quite a while now. And first, my memory is different from Karen's because I've arranged these for this board. But the fact of the matter is that I don't think there's anybody here who could say that board members have even tried to abuse the possibility of participating remotely. This is a board that shows up.
The other limitation would be that we need adequate notice. So it can't just be a half hour.
Most board policies provide for either three or five days' notice. I've seen some provide for seven days' notice.
So would I, would I be wrong in saying that the consensus of the board would be to go back to the policy committee? John, more work.
Sure.
And devise a more explicit policy on permission to have remote call-ins, allowing it with some limitations on the number and the days in advance. Is that the general consensus? Can I have a show of hands if that's your view? Okay, there we go. So, John, if you could please give us some options. Okay.
Okay. Would this be a time to express our opinion as to what that option should be?
Yeah, go ahead. General board comments.
Yeah. Philosophically, I fundamentally tend to agree with Dave. In the spirit of being trying to be conciliatory, my personal opinion would be that if we're going to allow a remote meeting, the condition should be perhaps no more than one a year on the condition that you're out of state or some such thing. I don't want anybody saying, well, you know, I get one mulligan a year where I can do a remote board meeting. I don't feel like getting out of my pajamas, so I'm just going to do this one board, this is going to be my yearly board meeting because I can do it. And I know we said, our people show up, that's this board. We're not all going to be on the board together forever.
Yeah. So, John, I guess, think of some...
We'll come up... We'll come up. And Mike, you'll, you'll be in that meeting, so we could talk.
But think of some contingencies, some options for us to discuss.
I just want to say one thing. I understand the out-of-state thing, but theoretically you could be sick.
Yeah.
And in-state and like, but able to participate. So just think of that too.
So that's, you know, again, that's what you need to think about, those contingencies and those things. Yeah, get creative, John. Get creative. Have fun.
I know we have some anxious members of the public here.
I know. Okay, so are there any other general board comments? I think we're going to leave the call-in, the call-in participation and cellphones behind and move to any other general board comments.
I can't make the last comment?
No.
Oh, well, I'm going to anyway. I'm sorry.
Of course you are.
Um, I, I think we also need to be mindful of how many board members can participate at any one time. Now, I know Steve said it can't be a majority, but it also shouldn't be four. Um, and, you know, we were elected to show up. And so I view the virtual communication more as a privilege than anything else. And I don't think it should be done for convenience. And I don't think it's so terrible that, you know, if, if you're sick, you stay home and you be sick and you're absent from your board meeting. It's not the worst thing in the world.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And there should also be a couple of narrow circumstances in which that, that type of communication is allowed.
So John, you got those notes, right?
Got them all.
Okay, good. Glad you've been taking notes. Awesome. If there are no other comments about other topics from the board? Okay, I see no more. I would like to open this for public participation. On any topic that you would like to address the board on, it can be anything at all. I see people here. Would you like to come up and speak? Please give us your name, your address, and try to limit your comments to five minutes.
Sure. Yelena, I'm from Toaco. Um, and I want to talk about the cellphone ban conversation you guys have been talking about. I would challenge you as you kind of explore the options that are on the table. I'd really challenge you to not allow your emotions to get in the way of what is best for our students. A lot of people raise the question of what do parents want, what do teachers want, what do statistics show? And, you know, the statistics, the science really is pretty strong in favor of banning cellphones. And to do that for academic improvement, over 6% improvement, for reducing classroom distractions, which 72% of teachers claim cellphones cause to enhancing focus. It takes up to 20 minutes for a child to regain focus after they've been distracted by a phone. It decreases bullying by as much as 40%. That's a huge number. It is good for their mental health. And, um, gentleman over here mentioned, you know, give me a statistic where cellphones help your academic, um, performance. I would challenge everybody to find a statistic that shows that cellphones at high school improve a child's mental health or improve their bullying status or improve any of the other concerns that everybody here has raised. You don't have a Motville survey, but a national survey shows that 81% of teachers think that cellphone bans are beneficial, that 74% of adults support cellphone bans across the country. It really is something that is, um, that I think our students are crying out for, but can't verbalize it and won't verbalize it for the peer pressure, you know, reasons that they're all dealing with. Um, you know, a number of you have mentioned preparing kids for real life. So as an employer, I can't tell you the number of times I have, um, wanted to fire, to lower pay and have reprimanded my employees for using their cellphones at the job. You do not learn how to be a productive member of this society by having your cellphone off to the side and playing along, which is what kids are doing. So, you know, if the concern is total ban, they need to reach their parents, whatever, you can create very, very easy, um, opportunities for kids to have access to their phones. So they're going to have them in their backpack, right? Maybe they get in trouble if they're, show them, if it's, if they're visible in the hallways, in, during lunch, wherever they are during free time. Give them 10, 20 designated areas around the school where they can enter and use their phones as they see fit to talk to their parents, to deal with emergencies, to have that moment if the autistic or mentally, you know, any child needs to connect or decompress. Give them spaces where they can use their phones for short periods of times if it's an emergency. But to have it on them all day long, um, you know, you're giving them a drug that's not good for them. And, you know, I'm going to end this as I started. Please, please, please do not allow your emotions get in the way of what's best for all of our kids. Please.
Thank you very much for your comment. Does anybody else wish to speak on any topic? Hi, could you just provide your name, address, and limit it to five minutes, please?
My name's Rebecca Corchman. I live at 20 Nathan Drive. So as an incoming freshman this year, I'd like to talk from like the student's perspective on the cellphone, like, topic. So most of my friends or most of the people I know that are in high school or going into high school would all like love a break from their phones or love that six hours a day where they could have that break and not have to look at their phone and not... Because like it's really hard when you have your phone around to not like be stressed out about, oh, what's going on on like social media or what's going on on my phone? What if my friend's trying to reach me and I'm not like answering or they're going to get mad at me? Then if they know that I can't look at my phone, they're not going to get mad at me and then I'm not going to be stressed. So, um, banning those phones for the full day are, I'm going to make, help most kids be less stressed. And while kids will complain because they don't want to look stupid in front of their peers, I think most kids will be happy. Like I will, I would personally be really happy if that was banned. Phones are also used as a crutch in awkward situations. So like during lunchtime, people would be sitting on their phones instead of interacting, if had social parties and situations or people were just on their phones. And it makes it so, so, so much harder to interact with everyone. And, um, as someone who doesn't use my phone as much as home, I know that for, it's really hard for me to like go somewhere and see people on their phone and I'm thinking they don't want to hang out with me anymore. And I would urge the board to join thousands of schools nationwide that have banned these phones and many more around the world. And let's make the high school a better place. So thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out. I hope you join the student government when you get there. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please, sir. Name and address and...
Hi, my name is Skender. I'm from Motville. And I'm an addict. Right? I'm an addict to this thing. We all are. I heard a lot of things people said about responsibility, about maturity. The reality is the technology today has far outstripped the maturity of the average child. Forget the average 48-year-old. Yeah, I run my own business. I, I'm addicted to this thing and it drives me crazy. How can we expect children to have the same level of responsibility when if you walk into any restaurant in town, any other place in town, any dinner table in town, despite whatever responsibilities we say we claim on them, to not violate everybody? Every parent checks, every child checks. It becomes the de facto babysitter across restaurants, across dinner tables, across every situation. Our society is addicted. And the reality is as an employer, as somebody who has 20 lives responsible, I'm responsible for 20 lives. Some of the things that I tell them is, first thing, when we're reading a contract, when you're reading, when you're, we're putting something together of high importance, first thing I tell them to do is put this aside, put it on mute, get it in another room. You cannot concentrate for an extended period of time with that thing buzzing around you. The reason why is we all have FOMO. So we can talk all we want about social media. It doesn't matter, social media. It matters about if your friends are talking. If something is going on, if there is a buzz, it's not just Facebook, it's not just Instagram. It's are your friends talking? So if we're going to have all the kids have a ban, we're going to remove that sense of FOMO so they don't sit there and start thinking, what are my friends talking about? And I understand all the perspectives of those that, that may not have as much social capacity or, or, or whatever it may be. And, but I think we're perpetuating it. I think the cellphone and the whole world perpetuates that. My wife is an educator, so I'm not just talking from a totally ignorant perspective. My wife comes home and she tells me about the pitfalls that she sees in education. And a lot of it has to do with bullying that starts in the classrooms, with the FOMO that goes on in those classrooms. We can't talk about responsibility. I mean, she gave a very heartfelt discussion and we're hearing from somebody who's of the prime demographic, kind of pleading. My wife is also pleading as an educator. She's not in this district, but she represents educators from around the area, New Jersey, United States, the world. But yet we're still sitting here saying we should have connectivity to them. There is not one person in my generation, and I'm late-cycle Gen X, okay, that couldn't tell you at one point that we don't have fond memories of a time before cellphones. Everybody here, anybody over the age of 35 has a fond memory of times before cellphones. Because yes, they were supposed to create connectivity, but actually they went the other way and they disconnected us. And the times before cellphones were some of the most fondest memories we had. And if we can create that for six hours, just six hours for these children, I think we're doing them a much better service than we are by trying to create all these exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And by the way, for my fellow board members, FOMO is the fear of missing out. And it is a real thing. The fear of missing out is a real thing amongst kids. Okay, hello.
Hello, Melissa Bano. Changing the subject just a little bit. Dr. Gorman, it's coming up on social media for like the 70th time. If you could repeat yourself for probably the 71st time, maybe we can cut it at the bud. The reason that the school year is starting so early again, and I'll put it in an article and maybe it won't have to be repeated the 73rd time.
Sure. I mean, it might be better for me to just email you that tomorrow. But just in general, um, because there's like seven or eight different reasons that we've listed over the months. Right, so...
You give the top ones because people will...
Yeah, so, you know, we have a majority of our, our high school students that come back for athletics, for band and for other activities. They're already, they already started this past week, uh, so they're already here in the school system. We have, uh, students that are taking the AP exams. If you start the school year a little bit earlier, you're giving them a little bit more, or actually you're leveling the playing field with the rest of this, the country that our kids are always behind with studying for the AP exams. You're giving a little bit more instructional time for us to be able to have our students perform well on our state assessments as well. So those are just top three I, I give you right there and I'll, I'll give you more in the, for the article.
Could I just also point out, you're not losing vacation time. You're just shifting it to a different time. You still get your entire summer break.
Correct. It, it's, it's just a shift. And you know what? You actually benefit from cheaper rates down at the shore in June, you know?
Yeah, look at that.
If you wanted to get vacation a little earlier, but...
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on a topic? Okay, we have one more. Hello.
Hi. Is this even working? Can you hear it?
Is that worth? Yeah.
Um, on? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, my name is Katie Sobel. I live at 7 Earl Court in Motville. And I'm here to talk about a pretty serious issue that recently occurred. Um, one of the students at the ESY program, um, was left on a bus for two and a half hours in the parking lot, as I'm sure you are all very aware of. And, uh, the parents of students who receive special services, um, all of us, many of us, I can't speak for all of us, but many of us are very concerned about the safety and security of our most vulnerable students. And frankly, we are looking for some more accountability for this major failure of policy that led to two hours elapsing before anyone even realized that the student was missing and calling the parents to notify them that their student wasn't there that day. And this lack of a policy in place to account for our most vulnerable students is frankly unacceptable and it's extremely scary for a parent. I have two non-speaking children who cannot communicate, who cannot say a single word, who cannot tell you that they are in duress, they cannot unbuckle themselves from the bus, and they are the most vulnerable people in this town. And frankly, there has not been much accountability for this issue. It wasn't even disclosed to us immediately. It took, you know, several weeks. And, you know, while we understand that there was a criminal investigation, this is a serious, serious lapse of keeping our children safe. And a parent needs to know these things in real time so that we can make the decisions for our children about what is safe or not. I personally was sending my children on the bus for two more weeks after this occurred. I saw things happening that were a little confusing. My one son's backpack came home with a, a, a placard on it with his bus information on it. All of a sudden randomly out of nowhere, things were happening. And I know that the board and the school was working to improve things at that point and we do appreciate that and we appreciate all of your work. But the fact is, is that we were kept completely out of the loop, completely in the dark. And this is one of the scariest things that a parent can go through, frankly. I personally was crying for weeks thinking about these children who I personally know as well, being the class parent for both of the Lyft preschool classes this past year, and thinking about one of their faces sitting on one of the buses and easily could have been one of my children. So I really do want the board to take this seriously. I don't even know if the broader Motville community is even aware of this issue that occurred. And frankly, I think that it's important that they do know that this occurred because there are students that are at various academic levels and ages who are not just elementary students, who are very much vulnerable as well because of their abilities and their, uh, you know, struggles in life. And, you know, I think that the broader community really needs to know more about this and what the district plans to do to rectify this situation. And while we've had some, you know, really helpful ideas and, and Dr. Gorman, I really appreciate your attention to this matter, I would really appreciate for the entire board to, to really think about this seriously. I feel that it's very important that we implement some non-human-based protections for our children and use technology since we have it. I personally think that using ID badges so that when children can get to the school, they get checked in, they scan their badge and parents get an immediate notification that they are there or not there. This would eliminate so much time in these types of situations where time is very much of the essence. And I think that's very important as well as providing aids on buses for our most vulnerable children. I know a lot of parents have been commenting about this. And even though these things are dealt with on an individual basis, a lot of the times in IEP meetings, the fact is, is that many parents have expressed, me personally included in one of these issues, have expressed that my children do need an aid. And in the past, I was denied that. And this is for three-year-old, non-speaking autistic children. So it's scary. Just like it would be scary if we sent our child in an Uber with one person alone randomly. It's just not acceptable, frankly. So I really think that the board should consider that seriously, especially for certain age ranges, in making it a standard policy that our children have aids on those buses in case of an emergency. Let's say a bus driver has a heart attack on the route or they go into labor. We actually had a bus driver who went into labor one of the days and the next day she didn't show up. Thankfully, it didn't happen on the bus. And I do have to say that I personally, we have had aids on my buses, but I do know that there are several families who have had issues and they have not had aids on their buses for similar, um, aged children with disabilities. So I really appreciate if you guys would, you know, put some really serious attention on this and, and look at creating some really kind of, uh, error-proof policies that can keep our children, the most vulnerable children especially, safe. And I really would also appreciate that we never use Jersey Kids Transportation again.
Okay. So Tom, you want to...
Thank you.
Sorry. Are there any other comments from the public about any other topic that they wish to address to the board? Seeing none, I'll close the public participation.
So, so yes, just to address that last issue, um, it is an extremely serious situation. It is our worst nightmare. We treat the children when they come to our schools like they're our own. We know you give us your most prized possession, your children, and we take that very seriously. We were very upset. We had a number of staff members that were crying and we were trying to work the situation. The board of ed was notified immediately. The police were notified immediately and we worked cooperatively. And we're able to identify where the child was within 20 minutes once we were notified of that. The Division of Child Protective Services was also notified and they're aware of it. And the prosecutor's office is aware of it. So nothing was swept under the rug there. Since it was an active investigation of criminal nature, the, um, the, we did not notify... Since it was an active investigation of criminal nature, the, we did not notify the public right away. Notice did go out and I did apologize to the special ed parents that I wish I was able to communicate a little sooner. There was a miscommunication there or just a missed opportunity to get the information out prior to the media press release by the prosecutor's office. But immediately the next day after this incident occurred, protective measures were put in place so the children were not put in danger because we were being negligent in any way. So, the next day, we had different procedures put in place. We notified the parents several days later and about those new procedures and they're in place right now. We are looking into new software to better communicate with the parents next summer. And we are looking into seeing what the software things can do with the ID system that you just suggested. Prior to this incident, over the past year, as you heard in the beginning of the evening, we've been looking at getting our own mini fleet. And we've been saving a lot of money going forward next year with our own mini fleet of buses that we have a lot more control over. We hire these drivers, we train them, and they are going to be dealing with our most vulnerable special ed population and other kids that have special needs. So, we're very proud of that and we're going to be bringing that in-house and we're going to be retrofitting these buses with GPS systems and some cameras that are internal. So, that was all in place prior to this incident. Notifying the community, the letter did go out to the community as well as, I think it was picked up by the local social media newspapers as well. So, that's where we are. I also held a 30-minute presentation last week with the special ed parents. That presentation and question-and-answer session is on our website for anybody to view if they want. You'll see the presentation, you'll see all the questions that the parents had, all the answers that we provided, and then anything that came up impromptu after that. So, we do take this seriously. We are moving forward with these things I just suggested and maybe some more that were on that website. And we look for better things to come in the near future. The last thing I just want to add is, there was procedure, there were procedures in place, including that it is a law for the driver of a bus to, when they come to the school, to get out of their seat, walk to the back of the bus, clear the bus, make sure there's no students on there. And then again, when the driver goes back to the bus depot to do that. The law was not followed and unfortunately, this bus driver is being charged with a second-degree crime. So, it wasn't that things weren't in place, it's just certain things weren't followed and it was extremely unfortunate. So, we are putting extra measures in place by having our own staff members go on the bus of these special ed runs to make sure, it's a double procedure. So, the bus driver's going to do it and then we're also going to be doing it with our own staff to make sure nobody's being left behind. So, and then this is how we're going to be going forward. Thank you.
If I could also add that I have had an experience in this town or in this district where my daughter got out of school at the end of school when she should not have, and I contacted the building principal and things were immediately changed. When this incident happened, I spoke to Tom that afternoon and immediately, he changed the policy, he changed his procedures to try to update them, to try to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again. Sometimes, I hate to say it, you don't know if there's a, if something needs to change until something happens. But I commend the administration on their responsiveness. They have always, in my opinion and experience, been responsive to the safety and security of the students in this district. And so, I appreciate the changes that have been made and I think that he's going to increase those procedures and the security of the students in other ways as we go forward. So, thank you. Okay, so I guess that is it. I asked for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? All not in favor? None?